Good evening, I'd like to call the September 17th, 2020 Legislative Meeting of the North Hills Board of Education to Order. We'll begin with a roll call for attendance. Ms. Cozera?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Ms. Philpott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Here.
Mrs. Reed? Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Mrs. Renova?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
Mr. Witherall?
Here.
Dr. Manorino?
Here.
Dr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Matthew?
Here.
Your move?
Here.
Mrs. Pellet?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Fleischer?
Not yet.
Okay. Ms. Shulley? She's there. She's frozen, she might be present. Okay, Mrs. Reeder?
Here.
Okay, and I am also present. Please rise for a moment of silence and please move to the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and welcome again to our September 17th, 2020 North Hills Board of Education Legislative Meeting. This is our first hybrid meeting, so I just ask for your patience if we have any technical difficulties. We have several board members participating on Zoom and then several board members in person. I also wanted to note that Dr. Nolish is recovering from surgery and is unable to be with us tonight, but we are wishing her a speedy recovery. Do any other board members have any comments at this time? Okay, it looks like we don't have any, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'd like to make a motion for the board to approve the minutes from the August 6th, 2020 Committee Meeting with Action and the September 3rd, 2020 Committee Meeting with Action.
He Spado second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote now, Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Renova?
Yes.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote aye, thank you very much. Next, I'd like to ask if we have a student representative report this evening.
Yeah, we do. Yes, we do, we have a report.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Okay, so Ellie has a volleyball game tonight, so she sent me her statement, so I'm going to read that for her. "I could not be at tonight's meeting due to a volleyball game at Butler, but I just wanted to update the boarding community about the success of virtual learning. Although nothing will compare to in-person learning, the teachers are doing their very best to give support to their students while keeping everyone engaged. I'm happy that sports are still happening because it really helps not only my mental health, but everyone on my team as well. Hannah and I both appreciate everything the teachers and board are doing during these unfamiliar times." So that's Ellie's little student report. So mine's very similar. The, I think everybody has adjusted very well to virtual learning, and Ellie said we were both very happy to be doing sports. I really feel like it does help our mental health and get out of the house, and the teachers have been working very hard to help us with virtual learning and being very supportive. So I think it has gone very well, but I know a lot of us are anxious to hopefully go back in some type, to go back to school.
Thank you, thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to Dr. Manorino and the superintendent's report before we accept any public comments.
Okay, thank you. Heather, you're going to share yours, correct? Okay. As she's doing that, tonight we're going to talk about another chapter in our Phase 3 opening plan. She's working on that part of the presentation. I just wanted to kind of reach out to everybody and say thank you. It's been a great opening, even though it was virtual. A lot of hard work and a lot of dedication was put into this, and it's been really nice to see kids in school, even though it was for one day over a four-day period, to walk down the halls and hear teachers interacting with kids, although it's weird because the teachers are interacting with kids and there's nobody in the classroom, but you can still hear teaching and learning going on in each of our schools every day, which for a superintendent makes you feel really good about the things that are happening in your school district. And I think we all know that this is going to be a very difficult year for every one of us, but I'm encouraged by the hard work and the dedication by our teachers, our students, and particularly their parents. When schools closed in March, we were forced online and onto a learning platform we were not prepared to use long-term. Sure, we had prepared for five flexible instructional days, but not 58. But we met that challenge, and we did an outstanding job providing quality education for our students as we closed out the school year. In August, we launched a fully virtual with live synchronous lessons. And again, this is something that we had never done before, and that our teachers are doing a phenomenal job at it. And I'm not surprised. I've been saying for years that we have an amazing teaching staff who are truly dedicated to our students, and that is what makes North Hills someplace special. And I'll admit, the incredible job that we are doing is making the decision to change our operational model to hybrid, a very difficult decision. But we all agree that the best place for our children to receive their education is in-person and face-to-face, and I'm optimistic that we, as a community, can move forward to a hybrid model on October 5th, and eventually to a blended model and hopefully to a full traditional model before the end of this school year. By moving to hybrid, we are again asking our teachers to do something they have never done before, but I trust them. I trust that they have the best educational interest of our students in mind. And no, it will not be easy, and there will be some hiccups. This model is new to us all, but we will work through any and all issues that arise, and we will make this model great, just as we have in the past. Should my recommendation to move to hybrid this evening fail, we will remain in the virtual model as we have over the past few weeks through October 30th, which is the end of the first quarter. I would like to focus tonight's presentation on our hybrid model of our Phase Reopening Plan. As I said, my recommendation would be to move to hybrid on October 5th, and when we're looking at how we make these decisions, we're looking at the community transmission rate. And as defined by the Department of Education, there's three categories: it's low, moderate, and substantial. And it's all dependent upon the incidence rate for 100,000 residents over the last seven days and the positivity rate over the last seven days. So this chart is coming right off of PDE's website. We are moderate right now. We are in the moderate range where we have anywhere between 10 to 99 cases for 100,000 residents over that seven-day period, and our positivity rate falls between 5% and 9.9%. So in order for us to get to that full traditional model, we would have to be in low. It's the only category that allows us to bring our students back as we did before the pandemic began in March. That would require us to have less than 10 cases for 100,000 residents and less than 5% positivity rate. So you can see right now with moderate, our options are hybrid or virtual. We're not substantial, and if you can see substantial is basically 100 or more cases for 100,000 residents or a 10% or higher positivity rate, and at that point, the recommendation is for us to be virtual. So right now, as I've stated, we are moderate. And just straight from the Department of Health, you can see this level of community transition table. This is available on their website. And it might be a little bit hard to see here in the audience, but we are moderate, and we've been moderate every week since July 31st. So our numbers have fluctuated, they've gone up and down. They feel as though they're going up right now, but where we are as far as this chart is concerned is moderate. And on our moderate options, we are blended or full remote. And so our decision to even consider or discuss a hybrid option tonight falls in line with the recommendation for PDE to either be a virtual school or a hybrid blended modeled school. This is also something that comes out weekly, it's the COVID-19 Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard. Any of you can get this right off, again, the Department of Health or the Department of Education's website. This dashboard is showing for Allegheny County. And this week, unfortunately, that we're seeing is from September 4th through September 10th. But the trends are down during this week. We're trending down in the number of cases that week, we're trending down in the number of hospitalizations that week, we're trending down in the percentage rate was 4.1% for percent positive for that week. And again, that was last week, so when we get to tomorrow, they'll publish this week's comparison to last week. I would assume just from the numbers that I've personally been following that those numbers are going to go up, but they're not going to go up to a point that's going to put us into substantial, that's going to require us to be maintaining the virtual model. So again, these are all items right off of the Department of Health's dashboard. It's taking the data from the state and really relaying it to us as to what we should be doing as far as our operational model is concerned. So in the hybrid model, we've been talking about these different ideas since the middle of July. And so if this is the model that we are going to move towards on October 5th, it is a student in-person, two-day-a-week, virtual, three-day-a-week based upon your last name. Group A students will be last names A through L, and they will be physically present in our schools on Mondays and Tuesdays. And Group B will be students with the last names M through Z. They will be physically present in our buildings on Thursdays and Fridays. And all students will attend virtually on Wednesdays. And you can see there's a little asterisk beside there because we will adjust the schedule for weeks that don't have a five-day week. You know, as we get to the beginning of November, we have a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday school week right at the beginning of November. We'll adjust that week. We'll also adjust the week around Thanksgiving, Christmas, and as we arrive back from the Christmas holidays. So adjustments will be made, so that if you're a Monday, Tuesday student, you know that a lot of our holidays fall on Monday and Tuesday. You're not going to be shorted out of those days because you're in the first part of the alphabet. So we will have a calendar published that shows what days students will be attending on weeks that are shorter than five. The biggest part about this is that our lessons on hybrid days will be streamed live synchronous from the teachers' classrooms. All five school days, all five days are school days. So if you are a student that's physically present on Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday are school days. You're just not physically present in the classroom. You are live remote access into the classroom with your teachers. And students working remotely will be able to watch those live lessons through Zoom, as we have been with our virtual learning model. But interactions with the teacher will be limited during those live instructions. Our teachers can only focus on one platform at a time. And so although the interactions will be limited, they won't be ignored, okay? Interactions with the teacher will occur after the live lesson has ended and most likely asynchronously through Google Classroom. There will be time for our teachers to interact with students on the days that they are virtual. They are not going to be ignored. It's just that they will be limited, they may not be a part of the discussion that's occurring. They'll be able to hear the discussion, but they may not be able to interact with the students in the classroom. Again, it's a difficult thing to monitor both platforms. It's actually the reason in our hybrid model Heather is monitoring the online platform and not one of us up here. It takes two people to do this, so it's going to be difficult, I've already said that. But our teachers are going to be great, and I already know that they're going to overcome the challenges that come with this new hybrid learning. Also know that students may be assigned asynchronous or independent work on virtual days. So the big takeaway here is you'll be physically present for two or five days, but all five days are a school day. And that's an important factor as we go through this school year. When we get to attendance, daily attendance will be taken every day, obviously. So the online form will only be used for students who are virtual. So if you are a student with the last name M, like Manorino, who would be in school on Thursday and Friday, you have to log your attendance Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday because you're virtual, just as you have been through the virtual days. When you go to school on Thursday and Friday, you don't have to log your attendance. But at the same time, if you've chosen to not attend school because you're either ill, you're in quarantine, not comfortable attending school that day, then yes, you would have to log your attendance that day because you are present in school on a day that you are supposed to be physically present, but you're not physically present. So those rules are still in effect. That was the reason we changed our attendance policy to say that you can't attend on any day that school is in session, and it could be virtual. And so if you are choosing to attend virtually on a day that you are assigned in-person, you fill out the attendance form, you complete the work, and you have been in attendance on that school day. One of the clarifications with our attendance is that a student's period-by-period attendance is automatically generated in Power School's progress reports, but this has no bearing on their daily attendance. We're not taking period-by-period attendance right now. So you may run a report through Power School, and it might show that your student was absent, but it's pulling from day to their period-by-period attendance and not daily attendance. Absences shown in this report do not count towards daily attendance, okay? So some people were concerned about the fact that their child logged in, they did all the attendance forms that they were supposed to, but they came up absent. They didn't come up absent in the days absent form that would be on the front of the report card or the transcript or in Power School's app because that feature's turned off. The only place you could see that is if you pulled a progress report, and the progress report is pulling period-by-period attendance, we're not taking period-by-period attendance, okay? So hopefully that clears up some of the misconceptions about my child, you know, filled out the attendance form, but they're still coming up absent. They're not coming up absent on our building and daily reports, okay? So when we get to the new school days, if we move to a hybrid model, we're looking for consistency. And so to look for consistency, a consistent school day for all students Monday through Friday for the remainder of the school year would have to be for all in-person, remote, all operational models, no matter which one we're in at this point, any COVID-related closures, because we may be in a situation where we would have to close school based upon a COVID-related situation. We may have to close school because it's going to snow at some point. And so anytime that we have to close school, we are still going to follow the traditional model once we begin the hybrid plan. What I didn't want to have happen was that we have, for a high school student, we have a 7:20 start on Monday and Tuesday because we have an in-person group. But Wednesday, we're virtual, so let's go back to the 8:30, and then Thursday, we go to 7:20. That's way too many changes for anybody to keep track of, let alone a high school student and their parents. So if the board chooses to go hybrid, from that point forward, we will follow the traditional schedule. And so the benefit of this sort of comes into that snow day. If we do get a day that there's inclement weather, and I call a snow day, we are just going to basically move that date to virtual. It's not going to get canceled. If you've taken a look at our calendar, there are no makeup days. Because if we have to close the school because we can't transport students safely to the building, we'll just move it to virtual, and it'll begin on the normal time structure so that everybody kind of knows and understands what their schedule looks like. Rather than dancing around this schedule, trying to figure out what today is, am I supposed to be in-person, or virtual is going to be hard enough to manage level in what time? So we're going to stick to this schedule now through the end of the school year. Not now, October 5th, if the board chooses to go hybrid through the end of the school year. So as we're preparing for hybrid, we feel it's extremely important for our teachers to have access to their classrooms and be prepared before our students walk in here. So again, if the board approves us to go hybrid tonight, Thursday, October 1st and Friday, October 2nd, we'll have no live synchronous lessons on those two days. The teachers will report to the buildings so that they can get prepared for the Monday hybrid students to arrive. They are school days. There will be work to be done, there will be interactions in Google Classroom. Students have to log their attendance, but there will be no live lessons that day. Or those two days, actually. So that our teachers can be in the buildings, and we can be prepared to have students arrive on October 5th. Some of the things that we've kind of, we've tried to work out that are just not working out for us is that before and after-school care will not be operated by the district while we are in a hybrid model. It's not feasible with the social distancing requirements that we have and with the cleaning protocols that we need to have in place in order to get students through those programs and then have students interact in that cafeteria several hours later. It's just not possible. So at this time, we're not able to have district-operated morning care or district-operated after-school care in the elementary buildings. The YMCA after-school care will still be available. So with meals, we will have free meals for all students, at least through December 31st, as there's a federally funded program that's available to us. So when we arrive back in a hybrid model, if students want lunch, they can have lunch at no cost from now to at least December 31st, and again, that's through a federally funded program. Breakfast and lunch will be available in our cafeterias for in-person students on in-person school days, and the menus will be posted as they always were. Curbside grab-and-go pickup meals will be available for all students on all days with virtual instruction. So that's Monday through Friday in the hybrid model, because we have virtual students every day, Monday through Friday. So if you're virtual, or, you know, again, you're Manorino, and on Monday, you'd like to get lunch from the school because you're virtual that day, come get it. Because we're still serving grab-and-go curbside meals on any day that we have virtual instruction occurring. And again, you preorder those meals just as we've been doing over the last couple of weeks, and there's the link to the menus in the order form at the bottom of that slide. So once we go hybrid, we know that we're going to have to probably deal with a case or two here and there as we go through this happening in our school. And again, this chart comes right from the guidelines from the Department of Education on how we deal with situations when there are positive cases in our school. Right now, we're moderate, and if we have one student or one staff member, we would not close the school. If you have two to four staff members or students in the same building, we would close the school for five to seven days. And again, there's an asterisk here, and the link is going to be determined by the Department of Health. And five or more students is to close for 14 days, the length is determined by the Department of Health, okay? So once we begin, if we have cases, this is how we will handle it. If we have one case, we will not close the school. If we have two cases, we will obviously close the school for five to seven days for deep cleaning and preparation for students to return. So again, if this would happen, what I didn't want to have happen was that we would revert to a remote day, and now the day starts at 8:30, it just gets too confusing. So in the event that one of our buildings or a few of our buildings would have to shut down because of multiple cases, that remote learning would still be on the same time schedule as the traditional time schedule and not revert back to a remote time schedule. Okay, so this is the chart that we will follow as we move forward with students in the building. And then Heather will be tracking all of this for us on the website. You see there's a link at the bottom with coronavirus. We're going to do a daily tracker. So you can see from the communications that have come out through our district that on August 29th, we had two cases. And after a 14-day period, those are cleared by the Department of Education. So you'll see that those that occurred on August 29th are cleared on September 12th. The students that we had on September 14th are cleared on September 28th, and on the 15th is obviously cleared on the 29th. So right now, we have two active cases, one at the middle school, one at the high school, and you can see the date that those cases would be cleared. So we will maintain this tracker so that we can kind of communicate to everybody what's going on. And I think you've seen the communications that we've given out so far on the cases that we've had, so we will obviously continue to do that. But I think this will also be a helpful matrix for you to be able to see on our website at any time. And that way, you can kind of track the things that are going on right along with us as far as cases in our buildings are concerned. And here's the big thing for me, is that I want your kids in school, hopefully you want your kids in school, but in order for us to keep kids in school, you've got to wear a mask, not just in school, but we've got to be wise about what we do even outside of the school, because it's the things that are going to happen outside of the school that are going to get us closed out. Follow the social distancing guidelines, wash your hands and practice good hygiene. Stay home if you're sick. Don't guess, stay home if you're sick, particularly our students. As parents, if we're hybrid, I'm asking you to check your kids before you send them to school. Are they healthy? Are they well enough to be there? If they're not, please keep them home, please keep them in our virtual environment to keep everybody safe. And get a flu shot if you can. It's really important that we keep everybody healthy and safe as we go through this. I know it's flu, it's going to be cold season, people aren't going to be feeling well, and just because you don't feel well does not mean you have the coronavirus. But if you're not feeling well, stay home. I think it's nice that we have the option to be able to continue to educate kids even when they're home. It's not the greatest, but we can still educate your kids whenever they're home. So if they're sick, please, for everybody, keep them home until they're well enough to be here. And if you do have signs and symptoms of the coronavirus, reach out to your PCP and find out what they would like you to do, should you get tested, should you quarantine, whatever it might be. And then please contact your nurse. If you're experiencing symptoms of the coronavirus or your children are, contact your school nurse, and they'll walk you through what you're supposed to do, they'll notify us, and we can help to handle it from there to keep everybody healthy and safe. That's all I have.
Okay, well, I'd like to give the board an opportunity to ask questions about the presentation, and then we'll have a discussion on the motion under Education. So I have a question, which is that could you talk a little bit more about what specifically the teachers will be doing on October 1st and October 2nd, and what kind of training is going to be provided to them on those days?
So a lot of it is going to be preparing the classroom. So what, where does my device get set up so that I can have both groups interacting? So that I can manage the students that I have in front of me, and I can have the students that are not in front of me able to see what I'm doing? So that's going to be a big part of it. The other part is, you know, how they operate in Zoom, how they do Google Classroom, how we record in this environment, those types of things that are a little bit different because they're in a different setting. So that's really what it's going to be focused on, is really preparing the room, preparing them technologically in order to walk down the path of hybrid. A big part of hybrid is virtual, so I think we've done a lot of that work already. Now it's taking the virtual that we've been doing this close to a machine and now putting it into my classroom and making it work.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that the teachers need training, and I'm very supportive of that and the teachers, but I'm also concerned about taking those two days of instruction away from our kids and giving them asynchronous instruction, so I'm just personally not super happy about that. Heather, are you able to change the view on Zoom? Because I can't see all the board members, so I wouldn't be able to see if they all had questions, but I don't know if anybody else has any questions on the presentation.
Yeah, I'll go. Dr. Manorino, you noted that we've been moderate through the end of July, and, you know, back in August when we first voted on this, you recommended that we go virtual. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about why now the recommendation is hybrid?
The big part of that is I don't think, I think that virtual is a big part of hybrid. And I felt like we needed to take one step at a time, and we had to get virtual good before we could do hybrid. That was part of it. The other part of it was that, and my chart only goes back to August 19th, but on August 19th, we were substantial in our community. We had 93 cases in a seven-day period. As of right now, we're at 35. So our numbers in our community, that's Ross and Westview, are going down. Now, the last couple of days, they have gone up, but they're not up to the point that they were in early August. So we were in a substantial situation at the time. Allegheny County numbers were climbing down until most recently, they started to climb back up over the last six days or so. The last two days, they've kind of hovered in the 70s. So at the time we were making the decision, we were in three-digit numbers. They were in the hundreds daily. And so that's where I felt as though we were on our way up. I didn't know where the peak obviously was going to happen, because I don't know what the future looks like. But I felt at the time, there was too many risky variables, and we didn't know what it was going to look like as others began to start school either. And so we have a number of our colleague schools around us who have started in a hybrid model, and they have kids in their schools. And knock on any wood you can find, but they're not having any outbreaks either. So a lot of that was the unknown, but for me, it was where our numbers were at the time, they were much higher. And I felt that we had to get a good solid ground of virtual before we took a step into hybrid.
Okay. Can you also talk a little bit about, we have that blended option, and can you talk a little bit about why that is not the recommendation at this time?
That's a great question. I think blended is the next step closest to full traditional, because at that point, you're bringing every student every day, full capacity, even if it's for half a day, K-8, and most likely every student every day at the high school. Personally, I think that's our next step. I think we start, if we go with this hybrid model, things work out well with hybrid, the numbers continue to go down, we fight our way through cold and flu season without the coronavirus numbers being up. That would probably be my next recommendation, to go to blended than to traditional.
And if we do then have to move back to virtual at any point, how will that be communicated? How will that be determined? How will that be managed?
So if it's a full district move, it would be by board action, unless all of our buildings have multiple cases. So that's where that chart, where I talked about the number of cases per building, comes into play.
So we as a board would have to decide we're going to pull the plug on that?
Yeah, so basically, the way it works tonight, on August 6th, 9th, whatever date it was, we approved as a board to begin the school year in the virtual model. Under the guidelines of PDE, in order to come off of that model, the board has to take action, and that's the recommendation for tonight. So we're virtual until this board votes to come off of that model. Okay, so we moved to hybrid, but it doesn't matter whether it's tonight or whatever date. For us to go to blended, the board would have to take action again to move from hybrid to blended or blended to traditional or whatever's next. So what's happening in the document that we've turned in is there keeps getting addendums added to it. Every time we change the model, that gets added. It can go the opposite direction. If we went to hybrid and If we went to hybrid and things aren't going well, and on October 8th, when this board gets back together, even though that would be four days into hybrid, you said, "We're going back to virtual by vote of this board", that would move us back to virtual.
Okay, I have one tiny little last question, then I'll move on. The spreadsheet you had, it said that there wasn't going to be Africa in the building, but then you said YMCA was going to be available. Does that mean the YMCA is not in the buildings?
Amy, can you answer that?
I have a meeting set for later this week, maybe Monday. I can't remember exactly, with the YMCA to discuss what the options are when we're in hybrid.
Okay, so that'll be communicated to everybody?
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Can I say something now?
Here are district programs that we can offer.
Yeah, Kathy, we're just asking questions about the presentation now, and then we will have discussion on the motion next. Do you have a question on the presentation?
Basically, a statement and a question. My concern is, I think we're moving a little bit early on this. Number one, the flu season's coming up. So therefore, we're going to have students and teachers both out with the flu. My concern is, we'll be able to staff the building with teachers. I think it's a bad time for this. The volleyball player in the middle school that was just detected with the corona, it's early to say if it's been passed on to anybody else. I would hate to see us change, go to the hybrid, and then all of a sudden have to go back to virtual. I think we need to keep these students on one path and move forward then. I'd like nothing better than to have the kids back in school, but I want them all back in school, just not a few. And then, in regard to books and iPads, now when they go home, they have to take everything home with them and then bring it back.
Yeah, they would have to bring their materials to school as they always do on a school day and take them home. Yes.
That's an awful lot they're taking. You know, because some of it, they leave it in school, they don't have to take it home. I don't know, I think this is very difficult. And I only worry about the kids and the staff, but most importantly, the kids. That they don't get this, and God forbid something happens to them. I think we're rushing here.
That is a good point Mrs. Reed brought up about the textbooks, because that would be a lot for little kids to bring back and forth every day.
Oh, I know, they'd have to bring a suitcase.
I was actually going to ask that, too. My kids, you know, they're in first and second, and their books fill up two huge baskets on my fireplace. And to have to carry those back and forth, that is a lot for little ones.
It is. Too much.
It's just funny to have you, do you have a question?
Yes, I did. I just had a couple of questions. One, like Allie, about those two days that the teachers have for planning. Is our tech team going to be onsite for them if they have any issues they run into? Or how is the tech team going to support them in setting up their classrooms for virtual and in person?
Yes, the tech team will be onsite. So we actually met today with union leadership to begin to talk about what they felt like they needed. I miss that whenever you asked that question. It just kind of hit me, I don't know why it just hit me. So Beth and Amy will be developing professional developments for those two days for the teachers that need them. Them coming to us, rather than us setting up a professional development day. Because it's not a professional development day, it's a school day. So it's for them to be able to work to get their classrooms prepared. But if they are feeling that they need help on any of these things, there will be help available to, whether it's administrative providing, professional developments for them on X, Y, and Z. It's our tech team, which is onsite during the same hours that they're here, to help them set their rooms up. So that's all the things that are going to be happening. But as far as professional development is concerned, we did talk today about them putting together some ideas of things that they felt they needed when we walked into hybrid that we can then make sure that we get accomplished for them.
And they have all the devices they need in the classroom to make it happen?
Yes.
Microphones?
Yes.
Whatever that may be?
Yes, they have microphones, they each have a MacBook and an iPad. They have a set of headphones that have a microphone in them. So yes, they have the devices they need.
Okay, and then if we do hit that number where we would have to close a building due to COVID cases, would the instruction then in turn for that building look like what it looks now?
Correct.
Okay, so it'd go back to the live teaching for every class period?
Yes.
Okay. And if parents want to remain virtual, if we go hybrid, they have that option, correct? Without joining the online academy?
Correct.
Okay, and then if we see an increased number of kids who choose to go virtual instead of hybrid, and it falls on one end of the alphabet or another, are we going to look at those numbers and make sure adjustments are made so we're at close to 50% capacity as possible?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. The hard part is, we're not at 50% by dividing the alphabet the way we did. It didn't matter how we cut it. If you went A through K, one side's lopsided. If you went A through L, the other side's lopsided. So we're not 50/50. But yes, we can do that.
I was just thinking, there may be a lot of Ps that choose to go virtual or whatever it may be. And I want to make sure that we're constantly looking at those numbers so we're as close as possible. I know it can't be exact, but as close as possible.
I have one question. Do we have any technical staff or anyone that's here that will help parents that are having technical problems?
Yeah, Beth, you want to talk about that? Because you've been working real closely with Mr. Charles to make sure that we had tech support for students and parents whenever they were not with us.
That's a great question, Mrs. Spade. Dave Charles, our IT director, has already been working behind the scenes to set up basically a parent tech support helpline or ticket system for parents. So we're going to be releasing or launching that soon. There's going to be a place on the website that shows frequently asked questions with screenshots and videos. Like in case you're experiencing this, try this, this, and this. And we have almost always going to that ticket system. Where if a parent tries, "Hey, I don't know what it means to enable or disable cookies. I'm still having problems with this. I watched this video. Can you still help me?" Parents are going to be able to submit a ticket so we can communicate back with the RIT department. Dave Charles has been working really hard on that, as has the IT department. So I think we're going to be able to support that much, much better in a quicker, more efficient turnaround time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
One moment, Mrs. Reed. Mrs. Pollitt has informed me, we have a request from the virtual audience that board members who are in person state their name before they speak. So if we can do that. Yes, Mrs. Reed?
Okay, when it comes to chorus, do the kids sing in the classroom? Or do they have to clap their hands?
No, they sing. They're going to sing, they are socially distant. We are moving them when we can to larger spaces. Like if you're at the high school and the auditorium is available, you will go to the auditorium. But yes, in chorus, they will sing. It's not the greatest world where you can sing with a mask on.
You can. Because I thought that was the fastest way to spread it, was talking loud and singing and things of that nature, that it spreads further.
I mean, it has been identified as a super spreader. So you're correct, but...
So we'll be wearing masks?
They will be wearing masks, yes.
And they'll be distanced?
Yes.
I don't know, this is too much for me. I'm old school. And I worry, now I'm a parent, I've been a parent, my kids are old, they have kids of their own. But I have to be honest with you. When my kids were little, and they'd get up in the morning and say, "Mom, I don't feel good. I have a stomach ache, I have a headache." I'd say, "Oh, here, take two Tylenol and a Benadryl. If you get sick at school, have the nurse call me." And I'm concerned this will still continue on with parents, that they're not going to take them to a PCP, that they're not going to have them tested for the coronavirus. And therefore, it's going to linger. Because everybody's the same, you know, we're not all...
We'll have an opportunity to have discussion on the motion right now, but I want to try to keep it to questions on the presentation. So do any other board members have any questions on the presentation? Mrs. Rennebeck?
Yes, I know that we discussed, obviously, the social distancing, the mask-wearing. I completely understand the limited. If you could talk a little bit more about what limited is looking like? And I understand that it's going to be trial and error getting us, you know, the groove, just like the virtual method has been. But if you could talk a little bit about when you say limited, so that there's not some finite possibility that that means there's limited interaction? And we can obviously talk about a suggestion for that. But in addition, what will it look like as far as masks? How will you be enforcing the mask situation? Because I think a lot of people are concerned with how the masks are going to protect everybody.
It's masks on or shields at all times. That's it, it's that simple. Mask on or get out. I don't mean to be that way, but that's the way it's going to have to be. I think that order is coming down pretty strictly by the government above us as well. But it's back to, if you want to be in school, if you want to stay safe, research continues to prove that this unfortunate wearing of a mask, because I hate it, but I'll do it. If I'm going to keep everybody else around me safe, I'll wear it. And that's the way it's going to have to be. Until we hear differently, you have to wear a mask on to be in the building. Student, teacher, aide, police officer, it doesn't matter. Me, Beth, Amy, we walk in a building, put your mask on, the way it's going to be. It's the only way we can do it. It's the only way we can keep each other safe in this environment. So it's...
So if a child takes off the mask in the classroom, it's up to the teacher then to send them out of the room and send them home?
To manage their classroom just as they manage it any other day. No matter what the, no matter what the rule is or what the rule violation is, it's up to the teacher to manage that classroom like they do every single day in a school in any condition.
Well, I heard there were kids up in the senior high that didn't have their masks on in the classroom.
Does anybody from the board have any other questions on the presentation?
I don't know if I answered Mrs. Rennebeck's question, did I?
You did. I guess, Kathy, the only thing I was questioning is, I just don't want it to be agreed, right? It's, everybody agrees that it's something new that we all, we have to do it, follow the rules. So I guess my question is, do you have some kind of process in place if that's not happening? If there's a repeat offender? And obviously, I'm moving that way to avoid any kind of... The last thing we want is for the teachers to have to police this situation, because we want them in school for the learning. So is there some kind of process, is all I was asking?
We've talked about this at the administrative team level, is how we would handle address code violation. Correct it, or you're removed. It's really the simple way to put it. So it's the way it's going to have to be. And I hate to come down that varsity on it, because as I said, I want you in school, all of our kids. And this is how we're going to stay in school. And it's a rule that we have to follow right now. And we don't always necessarily agree with all of the rules that we have to follow in our life. And this is one that we have to follow, whether we like it or not. And it's how we're going to have to operate our school, and it's how we're going to have to keep each other healthy. And I'm sorry, if you can't wear your mask, you can't come in the building. Student, teacher, aide, principal, doesn't matter, wear your mask. You mentioned limited. Again, the limited part of the interaction is about monitoring, is managing two sites. Because now, as I said before, you've got people physically in front of you. You have to manage the classroom. And it might be, you have to have students put their masks back on, whatever it might be. But delivering instruction to a group of kids in front of you and delivering instruction to a group that's online is going to be difficult, and we all know that. And that's where I mean by that interactions are going to be limited. You're in the classroom. And I think we've seen what that classroom looks like. Although, as I said, you're a little closer to me now, to my computer. But once I've got students in the room, you might not be as close to me at the computer. But you will hear everything that I say, and you will hear the things that the students are saying in that discussion. What I mean by limited is that, until we get really good at this, I'm not asking the teachers to then turn and say, "Little Dee over here is on the computer. Let's see what she has to say about this discussion." Out of the gate, let's focus on the students in the classroom. And then we can focus our attention on the students on Zoom. After I've ended my live instruction, I can then go to the computer and say, "Does anybody have any questions from the Zoom? Is that clear?" That can all happen in the timeframe that we have built for all of our classes. So it's not a complete ignoring. It's just that they won't be a part of the discussion. We're not going to ask them to share their homework problem right off, right out of the bat on days that they're virtual. In time, maybe we will. But in the beginning here, let our teachers get a good, firm understanding of what hybrid is. And they're going to focus their attention to the students that are in front of them. And they're not, like I said, they're not going to ignore the students, because it's a school day. They're not going to reteach what they did on Monday on Thursday, when the group of students are in the classroom again. So it's a very important day, whether you're in the classroom or you're in your bedroom on your iPad. So I hope, I hope I got it all covered that time.
Thank you, Dad. Heather, sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Rennebeck?
Oh, no, I said, yes, thank you.
Ms. Philpott?
Yes, Mrs. Rennebeck made me think of a question. We've had parents in the past ask us if they could be informed if kids in their child's classroom were not wearing masks for medical reasons? And if they could request that they not be put in classes like that? Do we have a procedure for that? Are we going to be able to do that?
It's in our health and safety plan that we will not make those types of accommodations, because we're operating a virtual school.
Mr. Little?
Yeah, because they remind me to always ask questions before you, because you took two of them, like three. But my one question for you, Dr. Minaurino, all this said and done, this is a large overtaking. If the board were to go and approve this high recommendation, you're confident that we can pull this off technology-wise?
Technology-wise, yes. Okay, am I scared? Yes, we've never done this before. Nobody's ever done this. And that's what I meant in my statement. Are we capable? Yes, our teachers are phenomenal. They prove it every time you give them a challenge. As I said at the end of last school year, they did a tremendous job for us. They were scared to death walking into this virtual. I was with them in all the professional development meetings we had. It was scary. Never done this before, how can I do this? They're doing a tremendous job. And they're just as scared walking into the hybrid environment, but they have a good piece of it down. And that's the virtual. Yeah, they're nervous, they're scared, and so am I. But I think the best way for us to educate kids is to begin to get them face-to-face, live in a classroom with their peers, even if they're going to be six feet away from them with a mask on. So that's why I feel confident that, are we ready for this? Yeah, we're ready. Can we do it? Yeah, we can do it. And there's going to be bumps in the road. And, you know, I'm asking all of you, be patient with us, because it's not easy. We've never done it before, it looks great on paper. So when we put it in action, we are going to have to troubleshoot. And I think you all know that. But I'm comfortable with where the numbers are, I'm comfortable with where our teachers are. That it's time to take the next step.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions on the presentation, again, we'll have an opportunity for discussion on the motion. But I'd like to move on to public comments on agenda items only. How that's going to work this evening is I will take comments from anybody who's present in the boardroom first, and then we will take comments from people on Zoom. So if you are on Zoom, you can go ahead and raise your hand virtually, and we will get to you after we take care of the people in the room. So let me first read our public participation policy really quickly. We would like to invite any resident, taxpayer, or employee of the North Hill School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. The board does reserve the right to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker or issue. Some of your concerns can be quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest. And I will be asking you to please state your name and address for the record. So if you have a comment, please just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Yes, sir? Yeah, you can stand up and, I guess, approach the microphone.
All right, so first, I... Stop the talk with these masks on, all right? So my name is Mike Santucci. I live on Grandview Avenue. I wanted to approach the board, first of all, and say thank you for all your understanding. Thank the dedicated teachers who have been doing a bang-up job the first month. It's been like, it's been rough at home with us dealing with my fourth grader and my first grader. But we're making the adjustment. I am a teacher at Highlands High School, and, which is a Title I school in Allegheny County. All of our students get free lunches pre-pandemic. And we are operating under the hybrid model right now, where I'm going to school four days a week and teaching. And then on the fifth day, it's virtual. Now, going into it, I was terrified. I was like, what the heck are we doing? We're going Monday and Tuesday with Group A, Wednesday and Thursday with Group B. They can't even get the days of a week right. Like, why wouldn't you have Wednesday be the day off where you clean in between groups? And I looked into FMLA time to take off, to be at home with my kids. My childcare changed, because now my parents, who are at risk, they're in their 70s. Well, I shouldn't say that, sorry, Mom. But they're at risk, and now they are one of our primary childcare providers, and they can't... And they can't see my children anymore because I'm back to work. But being in the classroom, the first day was just, let's get everyone through their schedule. Let's get it. And if there's any learning that happens, that's a bonus. And now that we are in week three, we just finished week three, things are working smoothly. I was terrified because our high school is built on a slag pile, and there's the one main unit, like where the office is, and there's wings that jut out. It's not meant to be one-way traffic. And I was like vehemently opposed to, like, how are the kid, the kids are not going to do one-way traffic. It's just like you go to Giant Eagle and people don't do one-way traffic. The first day, I was amazed. Every single kid had a mask on. Every single kid was walking one-way. It took some of them a lot longer to get to class because they had to go around the building twice, but they were still doing it. And I think the thing that's important to know is that the kids, although they're the X-factor in this, they are dedicated to being at school. I talked to my two daughters, and my fourth grader just started playing the oboe. My dog hates it. But, you know, she loves it, and she wants to play with Mr. Lucas in a classroom. It's hard to, to get, like, how do you hold that via Zoom? And even if that's two days a week, that's still two days a week that she gets to be in music class. That's still two days a week that my first grader is writing sight words on a piece of paper in a classroom instead of on Zoom whiteboard that she accidentally erased, and then that caused an outbreak at home where she's crying for the next 15 minutes because all of her work was erased. And that's, that's, that's our problems, like as parents, and we're dealing with it, and we're trying to deal with it. My wife's a small business owner, and she can't work right now because she has to stay home with the kids. And that's also our problem too. But at least getting back into some sort of normalcy, I believe, is, is the right way to go. And I applaud Dr. Manerino for his choice to go all virtual, although it was very taxing on our family. At the time, I, I agree with him, it was the right thing to do. And like I said, I was absolutely terrified to go back to work. But I think that now is a good time for North Hills to make the transition. Because if a little Title I school from northeastern Allegheny County that no one ever has heard of is able to have the Zoom lessons broadcast, we have microphones, they got cameras, they're able to fund the technology. I'm extremely confident that North Hill School District is going to have the technology already in place. The teachers are already amazing, and they know how to teach in the classroom. They've learned how to teach online. And now they're going to be able to do both. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. If you guys have any questions about the hybrid model, I, I can maybe give some insight?
No, but I did want to say that my son also played the oboe in fourth grade, and it is very difficult, so I, unsuccessfully, then he switched instruments twice, so.
And I want to say, I do know where Highlands is. Go Rams.
Go Rams. They got a game tomorrow night.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Uh, yes.
Hi, I'm Christina Smith, 128 Heatherton Drive. And can I ask you questions as opposed to comments? Is that okay? Okay, so I was wondering, in the hybrid model, would the Zoom still be recorded and then like they could watch them later later now?
Yes.
Okay, and then is the blended model required before, like, does it have to go in those steps?
No, it does not.
Okay. And then if we did go hybrid, how long before you vote again on a different model?
I don't think we, we didn't put a timeline on this one like we did virtual to hybrid. I think it would just be a matter of us kind of looking at it and as we go through the board meetings, as we go through time, to just continue to discuss it. You know, as we go throughout the school year. So there's nothing in my mind that says by Thanksgiving, by Christmas, by the end of the semester. I think it really depends upon how well everything goes, all the factors, you know, the health of the community, the health of people, and all those things. And people talk about a vaccine. I don't think a vaccine is going to help us because the population that we're dealing with, even with our teachers, is primarily not in the danger population. I don't see them in line for the vaccine anytime soon. And so I don't know, is the right answer, is the answer, not the right answer. But we haven't said that we're going to do hybrid for X weeks and then do this.
Okay. I wasn't sure because we said we'll do virtual and then talk again. Okay. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention with the books back and forth, I think that was a good point. I didn't think about that, but that was.
I didn't either.
That was a lot, I know.
No, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do you have anybody else with, yes, Mrs. Reed?
Tony Reed, Owood Avenue. I just have a question regarding the limited interaction. Specifically, just knowing my child's schedule, how's that going to work for like acting classes? Or even the honors bio, because she breaks them off in groups? So how's that going to work for the virtual?
So the expectation is limited interaction, but I don't know how the individual teachers are going to handle it.
Okay, so, okay.
So they might, they might handle it differently. They, they might feel comfortable in both platforms. It's just not going to be the required expectation.
Okay.
So if teachers feel comfortable, they could run it like we're running it now?
Correct.
And have interaction from the online as well as the in-person?
Yeah. But the edict from the superintendent wasn't going to be, this is how you have to do it. Because it's not possible in all classes, and not all teachers are going to be comfortable doing it that way. But some might. And I think in time, I think we get closer to the full interaction, kind of like we are here, than the limited interactions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, yes?
Hi, I'm Karen Steinberger. I live at 120 Bronx Avenue. So first, I just want to say that I'm really appreciative of everything the district has done this year. We've had a great start to the year. Everything has gone so much better than I expected after the spring. So, and, you know, while I go back and forth, even today, on whether I prefer virtual or hybrid. I really do appreciate that we started virtually to get the kinks out. It just kept our students a little safer. It got the virtual plan down. And, and making the decision a lot earlier than other districts gave parents time to plan. You know, unlike other districts who flip-flopped even the week before school. So, you know, while not, everybody may agree that that's what they wanted. Very appreciative of the fact that we made a decision and we stuck with it. Now that we've done it for a few weeks, so, you know, I appreciate Mrs. Reed's point that, you know, we have a case. And is it really the right time? You know, it, it's like buying a house or having a baby. If you ever wait for that right time to come, it, it's never going to come. I mean, we've been in school for three weeks, and we currently have one case, or one case currently, two cases, sorry. One at the high school and one at the middle school. You know, that's, I, I mean, compared to other districts around us, I think that's lower than what North Allegheny is seeing and some other places around us. And I think at some point, we just have to make the decision to go. For us personally, as a family, you know, school's going well, but we transitioned to the high school this year. The transition coordinator that we're working with, Mr. King, he has been fabulous. He has called every week to check in with us, to see how it's going. You know, do we have any questions? Do we need any help? And I don't really have any suggestions for him because things are doing okay. We're doing our work. We're turning it in. Our grades are fine. But, you know, we're in class with upperclassmen, with people we don't know. And so you go to do something like a group assignment, and you don't know anybody in your class because you're in there with people from all over the place. So I, I mean, I'm willing to take that risk to go hybrid, and in two weeks or three weeks, maybe have to shut it down. Because then at least she's going to know the people in her class. The teachers are going to at least be more familiar with her, and they're going to know her strengths and her weaknesses. Right now, it's, well, they only know if she speaks up. And while we're a good advocate for ourselves, it's a little scary in a brand-new building, you know? So I, I would just appreciate you, you know, taking the time to consider that even if we're only there for a short time, there are a lot of benefits. You know, and, and we already know we can do it virtually. So.
My only concern is that like we're going for virtual and not hybrid is doing like math class. Our math class isn't a full 40 minutes, whereas like in a co-tat class, we need more instruction. And we just aren't getting that because they aren't spending full time. And they just give us assignment, and then we go and work on it by ourselves. And if we have a question, we just have to sit there and wait. But if we're taking a test, we can't ask a question in the middle of the test because you can't help everyone with just one question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you both so much for speaking.
Young lady, what's your name? I'm sorry.
Frances.
Frances, thanks for coming, being a young person coming here and talking. But thank you.
Um, okay, so now we will, I guess Heather will manage the Zoom portion of the comments for us. Okay, first up, it's Catherine Reagan. Are you there? Do you want to unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Catherine Reagan, and I'm at 108 Conzier Drive. I just had a quick question. I have a fourth grader who got off the bus his first day of school, going back to the book issue. Honest, honest to goodness, if he has to take in every single book every Thursday and Friday. I mean, I might need to have him see a chiropractor. So I don't know what a good balance is. Like, if you're, is it possible, are there extra books that they could utilize in school? Could teachers be making photocopies so they could keep the books at home? And have other resources in school? Could they be told what to bring in? But I mean, he has, you know, two math books, two ELA books, the science fund. It's just a lot going back and forth.
Can I make a comment on that? My, one of my teachers, or one of my student's teachers, her daughter's teachers ordered some workbooks that just came in. And so she's kind of struggling with this because they, you know, she doesn't know how she's going to get them these workbooks. And I think, in that particular case, I think what she mentioned she was planning to do is like put them in the Zoom classroom. Like, take a picture of them, you know, PDF them, put them in the Zoom classroom, and then, you know, to the extent that's possible, to avoid them having to. I mean, I think there's probably some books they won't be able to do that with. But like, the teachers may be able to rectify that by, by putting page by page in the Google Classroom. So maybe that's something they can look into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a valid question and concern, and one that I, I think is, we're just thinking about tonight. So hopefully we'll have a better solution for that in the coming days. Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
Well, I think, can I have one more quick question? I'm sorry. The other quick question I have is, with this six-day cycle for elementary school, I'm not. Turned with my middle, when she reports, everything else is the same schedule. But my fourth grader, how, how is that going to work with the six-day cycle? Like, are specials going to still continue to be online? Are they gonna, I, I can't imagine Jim will look the same hybrid that it is now. Just things that can sit, not, not necessarily need an answer, but just things to consider. Like, are test days, if it's a day six and you're home, you're home, but if you're in school. I don't know. There are just things I think about moving to hybrid.
Amy, do you want to talk about the specials?
Sure. The specials will still follow the six-day cycle, and those teachers are preparing to do hybrid lessons just like the regular classroom teachers are. Each special has its own flavor and looks a little bit different. So preparing an art lesson that is both being completed at home and at school is certainly a challenge and might look a little bit different than maybe some physical activity that can be happening in both places. Because we're not sharing materials, so it won't be game sports in phys ed. It'll still look a lot like individual fitness. So, so that's a little easier to do hybrid than, say, an art lesson. But I use that word easier loosely because none of this is easy, as you're indicating. While, while I have a minute here, maybe I'll speak to the book issue too. We certainly are considering the books. Our teachers loaded up the kids on those four days that they were in school, and the students carried home an awful lot of things. So there would be communication. We're all using the Dojo system to communicate with families. So there would certainly be communication, whether it's through Google Classroom or Dojo, about what needs to be brought to school and what can stay home. We certainly don't want children to be getting on the bus or getting into their cars with loaded-down backpacks that they can't lift. That's, that's not the intention. So our teachers will be very choosy about how they manage that, and they'll communicate with families as well.
Thank you. Okay, next up on Zoom, we have Natal Kieza, Highland West. I'm sorry, I didn't pronounce that for sure. Here, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, it's Mihael Chanshkevich, 11527 East Warrington Avenue. I was just wondering if it, it will be possible to have your, in my case, kindergartner come to the live days on the group, on the other group than he's assigned to, to accommodate my work schedule? So he falls into Monday, Tuesday, right? But it would work a lot better for my work if he could come in Thursday, Friday. Is, would it be possible to work that out, or is that too much chaos?
No, sure, call. You need to contact your voting principal. We cannot accommodate all of those requests, but we can accommodate some. So it's, it's a case-by-case basis based upon the number of students in the school, in that grade band, in that group. So please contact your voting principal, and they'll work with you, and hopefully they could make it work. Again, we can't blanketly do that, or it's going to be impossible for us to be able to pull this off. But if that is a situation that could benefit your family, like you just described, that it's a work situation for you, please contact your principal, and if we can make that work, we will. I can tell you that it is much, much more difficult at the high school, and I know you said kindergarten, but this is for everybody else listening. It is much, much more difficult at the high school in Group A. Group A is larger than Group B, and we're already starting to work on moving students out of Group A into Group B to make it work. Particularly Beatty students who are live at Beatty on Monday and Tuesday. So that's your example. But sir, please contact your voting principal, and they'll work with you, and hopefully they can make that adjustment for you.
Great, thank you very much. Overall, I guess I'm just super excited if this hybrid thing happens. Just maybe this is just a kindergarten thing, but for him to be able to go to school and see other kids is, is super, super exciting. So thanks for working on.
Next up on Zoom, we have Barb Dreams.
Hi, I'm Barb Dreams. I'm 106 Hidden Valley Drive. I have a question about homeschool and how the attendance is turned off. You know, my son is very good at managing his time and going on and putting in that he has attended. But there's no way for me to see that. And, you know, we got an accidental email today saying that he had not done attendance for three days. And I have no way of seeing that when he has done it, when he hasn't done it. I can't see that from my other son. I, I just wanted to make sure that he's doing it right and everybody's getting, you know, that I don't get some weird letter that I, my kid didn't go to school.
Mrs. Reed, I certainly can appreciate that question. Yes, the principals are tracking attendance very, very carefully, and they will send out communications. So again, if they do not see a student that checks in for attendance within, misses, you know, more than two days in a row, they are immediately either going to contact you via email, or they're going to pick up the school, the phone, and they're going to call you, or the school nurse will. So they are running daily reports, so we are making sure that in the event that we are missing kids, that we are reaching out to parents to speak with them to find out what the situation is and if there is anything that we can do. So I'm sure your son is doing it correctly, and if there would be an issue or problem, you would hear from your son's principal, okay?
Yes. My, my other, my older son is also kind of, you know, he might sleep through a class or something, and if I were to know immediately that he wasn't in science class, that I could call and make sure that he's on the Zoom as opposed to three days. three days later finding out that he hasn't been to science class for three days.
Sure. I think the teachers, like I said, will reach out with regard to that because right now we're focusing on the daily attendance. That is what we're looking at for the most part because again, students may choose not to watch the Zoom while we strongly, strongly encourage them to attend every single Zoom because our teachers are doing a fantastic job. We do know sometimes kids aren't feeling well, things as such. But I can assure you, if you want to send an email to your children's teachers and say, hey, if they're ever not where they're supposed to be, they're expected to be at every Zoom, our teachers will communicate back. Okay?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Is that the end of our public comments? It looks like. Thank you, Mrs. Pellet. Okay, we will next move on to education and that is me. So we have a request under education for the board to change the instructional operational model from virtual to hybrid as defined in the district approved health and safety plan beginning on October 5th, 2020. This motion would authorize the superintendent in consultation and recommendation from the Allegheny County Health Department to change the operational model from hybrid to virtual for any or all school buildings based upon positive identification of COVID cases in students or staff members. The reasons for this action will be communicated to the Board of Education. So I am going to make a motion and then we can have some discussion on that. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve education item one.
De Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. So I have some comments on this I'd like to make and then I would like to give everybody else on the board an opportunity if they have comments on this as well, because I know this is a big decision. I think we have a really tough decision ahead of us. I have several concerns about the hybrid model, namely concerns about how this model can be a solid educational model. As amazing as our teachers are, I am concerned about them and the expectation for them to deliver education on multiple platforms at once. I'm also concerned about the students that will be learning from home with limited, if any, interaction on the virtual days. And I'm worried about students possibly being left behind and needing additional assistance from parents on those days, particularly elementary students. I have a few questions about the stability of this model, the loss of a consistent platform for students and our ability to keep buildings open, particularly as we move into the colder months. On the other hand, there are lots of pros and cons here. I have concerns about students being left behind by virtual learning continuing. And I have concerns about those who require in-person education to thrive. So basically all the considerations from the last vote we had in August still remain for me. However, what has changed is our access to guidance from the state. The last time we voted was on August 6th and there was no matrix from the state to clearly guide our decision. On August 10th, the state released additional guidance and as Dr. Manorino stated in his presentation, we do fall into the moderate category, which would allow schools to operate in the hybrid model. So I will be placing my vote tonight based on what the data currently is and not based on any speculation or fear about what I might think the data might be tomorrow or in the future. I know that the public will be holding the board accountable and I believe as board members, we need to hold the administration accountable for providing the very best possible education to both those learning at home and those learning in person every day. And we also have a responsibility to set our teachers up for success as they, as they navigate yet another new educational model. And just in closing, on a personal note, I will be completely transparent and add that hybrid sounds like it's going to be very challenging for my family personally and require a lot more management from me. But as I said last time when I voted, I think it's my duty as a board member not to vote for what is in the best interest of my family, but to vote for what I think is in the best interest of the district as a whole. And at that time, I personally would support giving the students a chance at having some in-person education. Do you have comments from any other board members? Mr. Little?
I'll go. I, I thank you, Madam President. I, I don't want to reiterate too much because a lot of the sentiment that you mentioned were my concerns. I do want to mention, one of the things you did say was when we voted on August 6th and I do not take back my words, but it was very clear that we had no guidance. We were left to just swim in an ocean and make a decision. Four days later, the Department of Ed then released a matrix where there was recommendations. We now have a tool that we can use to have, figure out which way we want to go, right? We at least have something now. What you mentioned too is, is based on the numbers currently we have. They, they fall within that mode. While there are concerns because nothing is perfect and no solution is going to make the entire public act, right? It's not going to please everyone. At some point, we have to rely on the data that is right here, right now and rely on that matrix that we finally have. I, I know it's going to be tough and change is hard. But at some point, we have to support the superintendent. We have to understand that our teachers are going to do a great job. So I, I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Do any other board members have any comments at this time? Ms. Philpott?
I am always going to err on the side of the safest model when it comes to education during this pandemic. I think it is so very tempting to just bring kids back into the buildings and see how it goes. But if we are wrong, kids and staff members get sick. This isn't abstract. It could be one of our kids. We are already seeing cases in our community that have closed down parts of athletic programs. And I would rather us continue to pick the safest option than one with health and safety risks. The data is just not yet to a point where I am comfortable changing our operational model, especially since it is not standard across the reporting channels and since Pennsylvania has not followed the, the 5% positivity rate recommendation for opening that the CDC and the World Health Organization recommend. The county has us at a 14-day positivity rate average of 7.74%, which is higher than it was when we voted to start the year virtually. The state had us at 4.1 last week, which still places us in the moderate level of community transmission, allowing us to choose hybrid, but still stating that full virtual might be the best option for a community, excuse me, for a community. Those numbers are so different that again, I choose to err on the side of caution. If the accurate number of where we currently stand in Allegheny County is somewhere in the middle, that still puts us higher than the 5% that the CDC and the World Health Organization recommend before schools open. I also agree with the parents in our community who worry about the potential decrease in the quality of education we might be providing with a switch to the hybrid model. Many parents have written us about the importance of consistency for their families, both from a daily perspective as the schedule switches from in-school to at-home and from the chance of a potential closure on any given day. Parents have expressed to us that they've worked out the virtual model with childcare and employment and changing to a less stable schedule just complicates that. More importantly, our teachers have done an incredible job. I think we all know that our teachers are amazing, but I speak for many parents when I just say that we've been blown away. The proof, I think, is in the emails we've gotten from parents who said that they were fully against the virtual model in August, but now just want us to continue until we can go back in a traditional model. Some parents are concerned that the asynchronous days will pale in comparison to the five days of amazing, engaging instruction our teachers are currently providing. And lastly, I'll just say that I think it's important to touch upon the plan for families who choose to keep their children home. Right now, many parents who write the board asking us to switch to hybrid say that those families have a perfect choice in our online academy. It doesn't seem to be that simple of an option and I am concerned we will see more parents looking to switch to online academy if we switch to hybrid. Right now, we're seeing that grades K to five at least are experiencing numerous, numerous issues from kids not having teachers to content and curriculum concerns. I do want to thank our administration for working hard to work to resolve these issues quickly. But the bottom line is that nothing can match the quality of our teachers and our curriculum. And there's only so much that our administration can do using an outside company. And I worry that the number of students we will lose to homeschooling or charter schools will increase if we switch to hybrid and their only options are online academy or a week of limited interaction. I believe we should not rush in returning to our school buildings, although I would welcome hearing a plan to bring back our most vulnerable students earlier. I believe we should take the time to prepare a better solution for all concerns and wait until our cases are lower in Allegheny County before changing our model.
Thank you, Ms. Philpott. Do any other board members on Zoom have any comments?
I'd like to say something. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Mrs. Reed, go ahead.
This is Kathy. You know, I've raised many concerns this, this evening as to why I don't believe we should go back hybrid. And heaven forbid, one child or one teacher would get deathly ill with the COVID-19. I don't think I'd be able to live with myself. I'm here thinking of the students and the staff as to what we should do. Right now, things are going good and the teachers have done an outstanding job with the virtual. And I believe they should continue on that way for a while. I hate to see us go back and like Dr. Manorino said, well, we can always switch back on this. Well, I don't like that going back and forth. Let's stay consistent. That's what I believe in. So therefore, I'm going with the, to stay virtual.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Thank, thank you very much, Mrs. Reed. Mrs. Rennebeck, did you have any comments?
I mean, mine, mine stayed the same as they did on August 6th. Classrooms were designed for people to have some kind of interaction. I agree and I can't enforce enough that, I can only speak from what I know. My children have done exceptionally well because of the staff at North Hills and the virtual has been great. But that's not where they, in my opinion, that's not where they need to stay. So because of the gradual progression, I think that it's time and this was the way the plan was worked out. This is what we had been recommended and I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I agree with Ms. Rennebeck. I voted for coming back hybrid. I still will vote for that. I think we have to get back to normal as, as easy and as safe as we can. And I see this as one of the best ways to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, this is an impossible choice. We're, we're weighing public health against educational excellence against, you know, our, our need as human beings to be social and interact with each other. And, you know, we've, to piggyback off of what Ms. Philpott said, we, we did get a lot of emails from people who want us to stay virtual. And I want to take a minute to acknowledge the fact that I think we got probably an equal number of emails from people who wanted to go to hybrid. And many of them mentioned the mental strain on their students. And to discount, I mean, not that Ms. Philpott was discounting that. I don't want to say that, but I, I, I personally don't want to discount that. I think that's something we need to consider. And for me, it's coming down to what Mrs. Steinberger said earlier. You know, I, I think we're looking at a long winter. I think we're looking at a possible situation where these numbers may increase. And I think for me personally, I want to take the opportunity to get our, our kids in school for a short period of time as much as we can with the understanding that it might not last forever. It just, you know, I, I'm going to put my trust and my faith in the fact that Dr. Manorino feels that he can keep our students and staff as safe as possible. And, you know, that's, that's how I think I feel that we need to proceed at this time.
Yeah, I, I won't reiterate what I said at the last meeting either. I was hoping to go back hybrid at the beginning of the year. But I have complete faith that our district is able to do this successfully. I am in the same boat that you are. I'm a high school teacher and we're in the hybrid model and it's going extremely well. And it's, it's been very successful. And I think with the guidelines we have in place and have in place for athletics, we've seen positive cases. Very few of them thankfully, but we've not seen a spread. So those safety guidelines that we put in place are working. And if they're working in our athletics and our activities, I have faith that they will work in our buildings as well. And I want to make sure that, like you said, we also, we also make a point to say that we did have emails from parents that did want to go hybrid. And we're hoping to have our kids back in school because we do have some kids at home that this isn't working. They need that face-to-face time with teachers. They need to be comfortable asking their teachers questions in person. And I don't want to discount them as well because we do have a population of kids that, that the, the virtual model is not what's best for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Poniatowski. This is definitely an important and difficult decision with many pros and cons. So if there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and proceed with the roll call vote. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
No.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
No.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Motion carries. It looks like we have nothing under athletics and activities this evening. Do we have a report for A W Beatty tonight?
We meet next week, so there's no report. I do know that, that things are going well with their hybrid model. Would be all I can report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Then next we'll have personnel and legal with Mrs. Spade.
Thank you. Personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve personnel items one through four and also five, which is a legal matter.
I'll second. This is Mrs. Kozera.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call vote now. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
I will be, I will vote yes on everything but three.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Thank you. Motion carries. It looks to be under community and intergovernmental relations this evening. So then we will move on to policy and Ms. Kozera.
Yes, we have one policy up for first reading tonight and it is a minor modification to policy 819, employee service awards. We had previously retired a policy that provided for an annual retirement dinner in 2018. This policy, 819, referenced the now-retired policy and so this modification removes that reference. So the, I move that policy item one be added to the October 8th, 2020 committee meeting with action for second reading.
De Spade, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, they're being done. We'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kozera. Did you have a legislative report this evening?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to finance, which I will take this evening as since Dr. Nola is not present. So we have the general fund bills, the capital project fund bills and the food service fund bills this evening. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve finance items one through three.
I will second that. De Spade?
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Is there, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote then. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Onto support services and Ms. Philpott.
Yes, I am very excited about this one. We have a recommendation that the board authorized the superintendent and the director of finance and operations to investigate the installation of solar panels on the hilltop. There is consideration is being, is, is being given regarding the potential installation of solar panels on the roofs of the middle school and the high school. The intent would be to decrease the cost of electricity via use of a sustainable energy source, thereby reducing the carbon footprint of the district. There is no financial obligation associated with this initial exploratory action. A detailed study will be undertaken and if solar panel installation is deemed to be potentially beneficial to the district, the resulting report will be shared with the board for further consideration. A decision would then be made whether to pursue bids for this project or to curtail further investigation. So the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approves support services item number one.
De Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Yeah, I'm very excited about the possibility of investigating solar energy and I think this could be a great win, win for the district and have, you know, no financial cost for us. So I think this is an exciting thing. Is there any other discussion on that? Mr. Little?
Yeah, absolutely. This is, this is a big win if this is where the way this would move. But I guess my one question is, Mr. Muth, I guess this would be to you. Can you hear me? I can hear you. Okay. As part of the attachment, I know we're talking about no cost, but I'm looking at the attachment in our agenda. looking at the attachment in our agenda. What, is this just a sample that I'm looking at? Would that be, we were going into?
That is simply an agreement for, it's basically like a broker for an insurance company. They go out, investigate potential, as it appears for the hilltop and give us an estimate as to what they think the protected savings might be over a span of time.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and once they provide that study to us, we'll draw conclusions, share that with the board and then make a decision as to whether to bid that or just suspend it altogether.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
I'm going to vote aye, but I'd also like to say that we need to be receiving, all board members, after you have your little committee meetings, updates on what's being discussed because it's very difficult to come into a meeting and hearing all this and that, know nothing about it. It's all new to me, a lot of it, and it's wrong. All board members should be informed of everything. That's all I have to say.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Philpott. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items from the in-person audience this evening? No. Ms. Pellet, can we see if, if anybody on Zoom has any public comments on non-agenda items? Please raise your hand. Looks like we have a few. We'll start with Jennifer Porchak Carey. Tell me about that. Are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Thanks. Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address.
Jen Porche, 142 Jacks Run Road. Um, I just wanted to make a comment. I always err on the side of caution and I'm concerned about going to this new model because it's going so well and the teachers are doing so great and my children are flourishing. And everybody keeps talking about a return to normalcy. Well, we're in a pandemic and there is no normal. And I'm very concerned because we all know what happens when school starts. We all know when all the children enter school, everybody gets sick and then it goes through the houses like, like wildfires. So I'm just, I just wanted you to know that I'm incredibly concerned and thank you.
Thank you. Sub Erin Turner. Erin, are you there? Hello? Can you try unmute yourself? And we'll, we'll come back. Um, Patrick Regan? Are you there?
And again, sorry, 108 Conzier Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just a quick question, logistically speaking. What, and I don't even know who to ask, direct this question to, but what is the substitute base for the district and how have they been trained or how will they be trained to step in to help support our teachers if they need a day off, if they unfortunately come down with COVID or flu or anything else? What, what's going to happen with that? Or what is happening with that?
That's a great question. We've actually just begun those discussions here at Central Administration to talk about what specific documentation, protocols that we could share with subs. And again, you know, subs come in, if a teacher would go out ill and we would get that weekend, we don't know necessarily who may be coming in every single day, but for lack of a better word, we do have our regular substitute teachers who do continue to come in oftentimes. And we do provide them with a packet when they come in on a regular day, outlining procedures, protocols and things as such. And I would assume that we would do the same thing now and allow them to give that version of what they need to know. Secondly, we also have fantastic teachers who will be in the building, who will certainly do their best as they always do when there's a sub in the building to share with them and make sure that they understand what's going on and to be there to lend a hand and make sure that they're visible to do that. So we've already started discussing that at Central Administration to make sure that that is in place if and when that would happen. But that's a great question.
Thank you. It's right, Erin Trainor again. Erin, are you there? No?
Oh, get down now.
We'll come back. Far three. I'm sorry, if you're speaking, we, we are, we're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So one question that I do have is a lot of the colleges or probably all the colleges, before they went back to school, the kids had to take a COVID test. Is there any way for us all to take a COVID test before we all start this hybrid method, just to make sure everybody's well?
It's not possible.
I, I think we just don't have the resources. Is that correct? Yeah, yeah. It would be, it would be nice if there was enough testing available for everybody to get a test because that would make it a lot easier.
Right.
I think this is where we're really looking for the help from parents. If your kids are sick, if they're not feeling well, keep them home. Yes. Regardless, right, whether you think it's COVID or not. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, October 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I believe if everything stays the same, we'll operate in the same manner that
Don't adjourn yet.
That we did tonight. Okay?
I don't want you to adjourn yet. I want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
We had never had a hybrid board meeting before and it sounded like a great idea a couple of weeks ago. Yes, we could pull this off, but if it wasn't for Chris Kaufman and Dave Charley and the amount of time and energy they spent in this room over the last couple of days, it would never happen. And I know today, as we were putting the final touches on it, it took not only Chris and Dave, but also Heather and Lori and Amy and Beth that spent a significant amount of time to make sure that we could make this happen, not only live, but from remote locations, that you could hear it, that we could hear you, that there wasn't sound reverberations. And just from, you know, the interactions that we had and the conversations that we were able to have, I can't thank them enough for being able to pull off a hybrid school board meeting. And thank you so much. We thought it was a great idea. Can we pull this off? I think we can and we did. And you guys did a tremendous job. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody involved. We appreciate it. And so since we've moved to the end of our agenda this evening, I will move to adjourn the meeting.